Good evening and welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District thirteen Board Meeting for Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand and sixteen. Like call the meeting to order if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again. Ted, if you would, please call the roll.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landworth?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement: Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up is the agenda: Approval, Adjustments, Announcements, and Correspondence. First of all, approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Announcements: March fifteenth, Tuesday at five PM, we'll have a school board listening session in the family center. Also, March fifteenth at five-thirty, a school board work session. March twenty-first through twenty-fifth, there'll be no school, it's spring break. April fifth, Tuesday, will be a school board special election B. April twelfth will be at seven PM, a regular school board meeting. April nineteenth at five PM, which is a Tuesday, school board listening session, and also April nineteenth at five-thirty, a school board work session here in the community room. Correspondence, Superintendent Kelly?
Mister Chair members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up, communications to the board: Citizens and employee representatives, at this time any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the February sixteenth and twenty-third school board meetings, the February twenty-third work session, and the February sixteen special call meeting, the personnel report, the treasures report for January two thousand and sixteen, and lane changes. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Nettie, thank you. Second?
Second.
Molly? Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next up is acknowledgement of contributions. If I could get a motion to move that forward.
Uh-oh.
Ted, second?
Second.
Laura? I'll read the resolution, then we'll have a discussion. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution: Whereas Minnesota Statute one-two-three-B-point-zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district, bequests donations or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District number thirteen that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. The detailed background includes a donation of twenty-five-hundred dollars was made by the Columbia Heights, to the Columbia Heights High School by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for the choir trip. Donation of twenty-five-hundred dollars was made to Columbia Heights High School by the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters for the drama club. A donation of twenty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents was made to North Park Elementary by the Benevity Community Impact Fund for Student Needs. Value and Kind: Donations of books to Valley View Elementary by Anonymous for students in need, estimated value three hundred dollars. Our total fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen monetary contributions to date are fifty-eight thousand dol- fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ted, if you would, please read the roll.
Sure. Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Landworth?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion Reports and Information Items: Reports from board members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Ted, would you mind going first, please?
Sure. I had the pleasure of attending the Valley View PTO meeting. Just a little plug, they have their family night coming up this Friday evening, so I hope everybody can attend from five-thirty to seven. Also attended several WMEP meetings, the financial, finance committee and executive committee meetings, and then there's another WMEP board meeting tomorrow evening. Just want to report briefly, we did, I did discuss with Dr. Matier, the executive director, about the value of services at Columbia Heights is receiving forty-two thousand, three-eighty-three, and she did confirm that that is actual market value of the services we've received, at least the services we've ordered. We may not have completed all those orders or attended all those events, but that's what she, she, she said. So, there's some, I think, some discrepancy there. And I also attended a chamber business council meeting on, last Friday.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I attended the conferences over at the academy, and that went really well. It's nice to see so many people get out there and talk with their teachers and see the kids running around. And I also attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting, but in the interest of time, I think I'll move on. Thank you.
Thanks. Nettie?
I was also able to attend the conferences at Columbia Academy and talk to some teachers and staff there. I also attended the Destination Imagination event held up at Blaton High School, and both Highland and North Park had teams of fourth and fifth graders representing the schools. It was fun to see them do that. And I also was able to meet with Superintendent Kelly and the directors, the district directors, and learn more about what each of them do, and I appreciate your time and taking the chance to, to teach me some things about what you do.
Thanks. Molly?
I also attended the conferences down at the academy, was able to watch the girls' basketball game on Saturday, Saturday night where they won, and they are playing another playoff game tonight, so I'm wishing them well, hoping things go good. I also had several conversations with community members and parents in the district over the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, not to be left out, I also attended the conferences at Columbia Academy. I attended the AMSD meeting, that was last Friday. And then had the opportunity, enjoyable opportunity, to listen to the Columbia Heights High School Choir perform last night, and they did a phenomenal job. Superintendent's report.
Mister Chair and members, the district and building-level administrators are currently working in two major focus areas, and that would be the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen staffing and taking a look at the last round of teacher evaluations and the tenure process. The West Metro superintendents held an information meeting on DSEG and desegregation lawsuit. As you know, we've, the state has been involved in the nineties with a lawsuit, and we are once again in that position. And the superintendents wanted to get ahead of the curve to see what the lawsuit might entail and what ramifications it might have for metropolitan school districts. When this suit has been brought in other states, it's been rare, but there have been two major solutions. One was to dissolve all metropolitan school districts and make it into one great big school district. That was, I believe, the Saint Louis model. And then there was another model that decided that they would just enhance magnet school programming. We have tried the enhanced magnet school programming, so we're not sure what the courts will do in their wisdom when this all shakes out. In addition to that, Myron Orfield, who was involved in the nineteen ninety-eight lawsuit, is still championing a mega, a mega, a mega school district for the metropolitan area. So it looks similar to Clark County, Las Vegas, or Los Angeles County school districts. So it will actually go to trial in November, and we want to make sure that if we need to interfere, as it's called in the legal parlance, Ted.
Interveen?
Inter, you know, it's called interference.
Oh, interference.
Interference, that we would have a coalition that would do that. So, that's what we're discussing on that matter. And then AMSD, as Chair Larkin already announced, had its big legislative preview last Friday, and I want to say special thanks to Senator Barbara Goodwin, and Representative Connie Bernardi, and Representative Carolyn Lane for being in attendance to listen to the needs and concerns of metropolitan school districts. The WMEP superintendents held another meeting with the WMEP Executive Director Kimberly Matier to discuss restructuring the WMEP service delivery model, and currently, we're, we're discussing a model that is based on a base price and a cafeteria or a tiered model. The price point is still a little high as far as delivery of services, and so that will continue to be something that the WMEP board will have to look into and the superintendents as well. There is a concern that currently, out of every dollar spent at WMEP, sixty percent goes for, to administrative or operational costs, and approximately forty percent goes to direct service for students and, and staff development. And it, we couldn't run the school district that way, so we have a three percent margin on administrative. So, the financial model won't work on the model that we have just now, so we're going to meet again in one week, and I'm sure that there'll be some updates by Dr. Matier at the meeting tomorrow night when the WMEP superintendent, the WMEP Joint Powers Board meets. I want to just comment because Member Landworth did on the forty-two thousand dollars for the seven kids that are going for three days and staying in Minnesota on the field trip. And the school district still remains very adamant that we don't feel this is a fair market price for a field trip, but I'm looking out at our choir director, and we're taking the entire choir for like seven days or five days and six, five nights and six days, or however long we're going, to Chicago, and it's, it's not gonna, it'll be, we'll rack up a similar cost, so it may be market value in the West Metro, but it's not market value for, for us. And so, we remain disappointed in that, in that figure of the forty-two. Yes?
I just want to clarify, what I was told by Dr. Matier is not for seven students, it's for several more students signed up for the Civil Rights Research Experience but then withdrew, and the forty-two thousand is for all the students that had signed up. She didn't say how many. And also for other student programs that have been requested, so that's, that's the story.
It's our understanding, and Director Stanvig, you're here tonight, so how many students do we have going on this field trip?
Seven.
Thank you. And it's, it's our understanding that that is for the civil rights. There may be kids coming from other school districts, and they'll be paying their own market value, but for us, it's a little rich for our blood.
Right, but the forty-two thousand is not for those seven students, it's, it's for all those spots that were requested for Columbia Heights, according to Dr. Matier. So, I don't want to debate it, but...
Oh, I'm just, I want to make sure that our board has the right information, so how many spots did we sign up for?
Seven.
Thank you. Yes. One trip, seven spots.
Okay.
Okay, so just so we're clear here. And you know what, it's, we don't have to debate it, I just know what we're doing, what we're signing up, and the permission slips that we're sending. So, just to be really clear, and WMEP has a lot of kids going, so there could be some confusion, but we are only sending out the maximum seven. All right, and with that, I want to thank Nettie Severson for spending a very long hour and a half with all of us after, after class. It was late into the evening, and she was being very kind to listen to us talk about district center initiatives, so thank you, right back at you, the directors really enjoyed meeting you. And I've had multiple contacts with individual school board members and emails, so thank you for spending time with me, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we will, we won't, you will, be discussing the high school graduation rates. Start with Principal Robleski. Good evening.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Robleski and I are here this evening to present information to you on the Columbia Heights High School graduation rate. So our mission is, in Columbia Heights Public Schools, is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and the core values that this presentation will focus on is excellence, integrity, and innovation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Robleski.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Thank you, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight. Before I begin our PowerPoint presentation, as it is a PowerPoint presentation, it is a true celebration for the high school. And tonight behind me, I have our staff, and I'd like to introduce them as they are here in our celebration tonight. In the back, we have, in our math department, we have Mister Jeff Ellering. Please stand. Also in our math department, Miss Alyssa Rosnow. Math, Mister Dan Ronchak. Our school social worker, Miss Vanessa Letito Meyer. Our parent engagement specialist, Miss Yvonne Padilla. One of our special ed coordinators and work release, uh, work program coordinators, Mister Scott Rome. In our art department, Miss Diane Scully. In our English department, Miss Jill Passage. And our technology, tech ed department, football coach, Mister Matt Townsend. In our social studies department, Miss Chris Johnson. In our music department, Mister Alex Jakes Choir. And in our drama and English department, Miss Jill Jungers. In our social studies department, Mister Dan Cheetah. And of our administrative team, we have Dean Mister Gary Beasley. Our dean, Miss Molly Sprouse. Dean, Miss Kim Burling. Assistant principal, Mister John Kulik. And assistant principal, Doctor Laura McLuen. So, tonight, as I make this presentation, thank you for being here, and it's a true celebration to all of you for your hard work. Our first slide that we have is our trend data for the last five years for our graduation rate. And in two thousand and fifteen, you can see a considerable jump from the year, the Tonight, I'd like to also highlight some demographic categories that we have comparing to the state averages. And this is Columbia Heights High School compared to the state averages. As you can see in our categories, we have jumped up above the state averages. In our special populations, in our EL population, you can see a significant increase compared to the state. And a couple of things to point out is that, in the state of Minnesota, Columbia Heights High School showed the second highest growth in the state in the graduation rate. On our third bullet point, you can see the significant increases from our two thousand and fourteen. That's a comparison in some of our demographic categories where there are increase compared from our two thousand and fourteen graduation rate. And then you can see, our last bullet point, we performed, outperformed the state in the following categories as well. Those are significant increases. One thing that I'd like to point out is that it does take a village, and I think that phrase was coined some twenty-five years ago. And at one point in time in my life, being young, I wasn't sure what that meant, and today, being in education in the proud principal of Columbia Heights High School and of our district, we do know what it takes to raise a child. And it's, it's the commitment of our school board for our programming and the funding for, for our schools. It's our superintendent who gives us the opportunity to think outside the box, to be creative, so that we can increase our graduation rate and, and focus on graduating our students. It's our, working with our teaching and learning office and creating curriculum and increasing our rigor for academic success, and using data to see where we can really focus in and make a difference with our children. I think a couple of other areas that I'd like to point out is, as you see here tonight, it is our staff dedication, and it is, it's not us and them, it's we at the high school. We are one team, and we work together, and we are focused on academic rigor in the classroom. And I think in the last three years, our staff has really focused on a positive culture and climate of, we can talk about real expectations, we've heard it a lot, but I think with the positive climate that we've had, our teachers have had the opportunity to create those positive relationships that we know make a difference in the classroom, which now has allowed us to focus on that academic success. And over the last couple of years, we've seen that reward for, for the culture and climate of our building. We've seen an increase in our student involvement in our advanced placement courses. I think that's due to the fact of the support of the program, programming by the board of one program that's had a positive impact, is AVID in our advanced placement. And again, in our after-school boost programs that we offer, as well as our homework center. Those are just a few highlighted areas that we have that takes a village, and we're seeing the success. Now, as you saw, we do have a, one model that we have at the high school, it's okay to admit where you're at, it's not okay to stay there. And we do today here, before you understand that, we do have some areas of growth to, to perform and to grow that achievement gap in our graduation rate. And we know that the state of Minnesota has that goal of ninety percent in our district, and our staff is dedicated to continue to have that positive trend in the graduation rate. And again, no student category or cell falling below the eighty percent. So I'm excited in the fact that we are on our way, and I'm glad to be the principal here with the staff behind me to, to really focus on, on the success and celebrate our students in everything that we do. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
A comment. This is wonderful. This is, this is moving in the right direction, and I, I am so, I am so happy that you're, the dedication of the staff, I mean, I, I wish everyone was here to personally thank for, for putting the kids, really putting the kids first and making sure that they get through and they're getting the supports that they need. This is absolutely, absolutely marvelous, and I'm really looking forward to seeing some more of the college and the school and seeing what's happening from there. I think, I think our children have a brighter future because of the dedication that you've all shown, and, and I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Just briefly, I'd like to comment on the culture at the high school. I think that's one thing that we just can't underestimate, the teachers. I commend you all for creating that environment, and administrators. The learning is the focus, and, and we can see that, so thank you all for everything that you do.
I was going to say the same thing. To keep the kids in the door, they have to really appreciate the culture and enjoy being with, with all of you, so I just say thanks, thanks for that, and then, once they're there, for giving them the academic support that they need. My son's going to be there next year, and I'm excited to have him be with all of you, so thanks.
Yeah, this is fabulous information. Does this include alternative education as well, or is this just regular education?
The data presented tonight was the high school information, so the high school does not have alternative program with it.
Okay, thank you.
I can only echo what everyone else has said. We see so many wonderful things come out of here, on the arts side, the drama side, the, the athletic side, the activities. We hear a lot about it, and then you, at times, hear the naysayers about the, the education piece and, and how we're doing academically, and I don't need to say anything, your screen said it all, so congratulations to all of you. I really admire what you do with our students, especially mine, but all of them in particular. There's a reason that those numbers are climbing, and it is the climate, and it is the dedication that you guys are, are putting into what you do every day, so thank you. It's truly appreciated by me. Anyone else? Superintendent Kelly?
And as superintendent, I would just like to say how proud I am of each and every one of you, and then the people that are not here tonight, because you're doing the very, very hard work of digging deep for our kids, and it is hard work, and you're having success where other school districts are not, because of the particular exceptionalities of our district. And if, I just want you to know how much that is valued and appreciated. And this evening, I was talking with the Commissioner of the, of Education, Bretina Casilius, on another matter, and she wanted to extend her congratulations to each and every one of you tonight, and said particularly hello, Dan, thanks for the hat. And in addition, she looks forward to perhaps making a visit in April with staff, so thanks to each and every one of you. It takes a village, and we're really happy that you are populating our village. Thank you.
Okay, now that awkward moment that always happens at this point, it will do what has become a tradition, is unless you're really, really interested in it, you can all leave now. You won't, you do not have to stay.
I'm going to round the applause for them all.
Congratulations, guys. Okay, next up, we'll move on to our action items. First up is the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school calendar, and Nicole will be presenting. Hi, Nicole.
Hello. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, why is it every single meeting I follow the most amazing story? I'm going to have to start working with Mrs. Hoey a little bit carefully on the agenda. Thank you for having me here this evening. The last board meeting, I presented the calendar that was developed considering laws and contracts. We work with parents and family members and staff from each building, as well as administrators, directors, and principals, and activities. I think we have a good calendar to present, and it's here for your approval this evening.
Motion to move that forward, please. Ted? Looking for a second?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion.
Were there any negatives this calendar that you can tell us, or?
Not in this calendar. This, this year, because Labor Day was so late, it's a little bit difficult, so it's moving a little bit earlier, it makes it easier.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Thanks for, thanks for putting this together. It's got to be quite a puzzle.
Yeah.
No easy task.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Next up is the Achievement and Integration Budget. And Xena?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm here this evening to present to you the action item of the Achievement and Integration Budget. At the last school board meeting, I presented to you information about the Achievement and Integration Grant and Budget, along with the plan with the amendments. So again, this funding supports integration, reduction of the achievement gap, ongoing work to create the world's best workforce through college and career readiness for all students. There are three areas or three categories that we fill in this budget through per state requirement, which is direct student support, so over eighty-five percent of this budget is dedicated to direct student support. And then professional development and administration rounds out the rest of it. So some of our programs that we're able to implement because of this budget are, as Principal Robleski mentioned earlier, AVID, also early college is funded through, through the Achievement and Integration, other types of supports for our families such as cultural liaisons, and other kinds of interventions, academic and also behavioral intervention supports through this, through this grant. So with that, I bring it to you as a recommendation for action.
A motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion.
Is there any other funding for early college other than through this? Do you know?
Through, through the Office of Teaching and Learning, we are supporting a portion of the teacher's salary, so say a teacher teaches math for the majority of the time in one section of early college, so we would just supplement that teacher's salary for that period.
Okay.
But not their entire salary.
Not the entire early college budget?
Um, I, I don't know if there's another budget, but this is the portion that just supports, so there's other, there's other, maybe perhaps professional development and things like that, but in terms of ensuring that we're able to have the classroom and the sections, this is a supplement to the general fund.
Yes, I was going to say...
Yes, I was going to say, anything else that would not be in this particular budget would fall into the general fund under FTEs coming out of general education or professional development, coming out of staff development. So what we have listed here, and as the program grows, we're committed to putting on additional FTEs for those classes that would not nearly all fit in this budget.
Okay. Is this portion of the budget related, then, to integration specifically, or is it?
It's related to integration and student achievement.
Okay, based on integration objectives, or student achievement overall?
It's based on the objectives that go with this particular grant, which are very well-defined, and then they need to be submitted to the state where they're reviewed and then accepted. So, this, this plan is reviewed. We're only amending our grant because our grant was approved by the state for all the goals and objectives coming out of the legislature last year, and we're just doing an amendment to that, so the short answer to that would be yes, Ted. It's, it's approved.
Because I'm just, I'm just concerned that we have adequate funding for early college, because that's such an important program.
Oh, well, I can speak a little bit more to that. No, we have additional plans that will be coming on as, like teacher training, or teachers coming back to get their licenses, or their masters, plus in content areas, that will be supported out of the general fund. But we put in some of the things that could be placed in the integration, because we believe they belong there to supplement the work.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
My understanding is this would preclude us from participating in WEMAP, then, if we pass this integration plan, or is that incorrect?
For this year.
This year, okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Next is the teacher, ECFE Teacher Seniority List. Lindsay.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, this is an annual event. We send out the teacher seniority list and the ECFE seniority list to all the members. They have thirty days to review it and provide any feedback. This year, we did not, it was very minimal changes that we had any feedback, and it was usually just adding in people that had been hired after it went out. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of both of these seniority lists.
A motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second. Yes. Discussion.
So there weren't any contests or objections to this?
No.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And next is the seniority list for everybody else.
Yes, and again, it's an annual event that we do per the contracts, and this is for the custodial, clerical, food service, education assistant, lunch duty monitor, seniority list. HR maintains some, and then again, we send them out, they have thirty days to review. The only questions were a few title changes, which we took care of. So besides that, everything else looked good on the seniority list, and the members were fine with it. So tonight, I'm seeking approval for those seniority lists.
Again, a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Four topics.
Um, there's a concert over at the Academy on Thursday, six-thirty, I believe it is. It's called Cafe Forty-Nine, so they're trying to kind of a new concept, you know, so if you have students...
It's a solo ensemble thing, right?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds kind of neat, kind of a new concept, so I'm, I'm looking forward to attending that, and I encourage anybody who can to go, because those kids really are truly outstanding, and they work so hard at it, you can see the dedication. That's pretty much it.
Bill?
The middle school musical, I mean, high school musical coming up?
April.
April, okay.
Grease.
It is Grease.
Grease.
Yep, it's Grease, yep.
I used to be able to recite that.
Uh, only thing I would mention is, I know that we had, I think since our last meeting, three wrestlers go to the state tournament, and my understanding is that they represented our, our district very well, so I'm very proud and congratulations to them, so. Anyone else with board topics? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at seven-thirty-five.